Once we've got everybody, I'll get started. Paul, the Town and Sherburne Select Board Meeting of May 14th, 2020, a virtual meeting to order. We'll start with Town Administrator David Williams reading the agenda.
I just want to check again.
Just a second, I want to note to everybody, I think you heard it when you came on, but this meeting's being recorded.
George, you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. The first item will be consent agenda with a payroll warrant and minutes of April 16th, 2020, and the next meeting date set at May 28th, 2020. The second item is consideration of action items regarding COVID-19 and state and local emergency, and it's a discussion with about the annual and fall town meetings, further discussion, consideration of meetings and warrants if needed. And then item three is land use matters. Town Council will be here. The first item is consideration of appointment for zoning board of appeals with Jonathan Fitch for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2023. And then consideration of local initiative program via Department of Housing and Community Development for Coolidge Street Developments, Coolidge Crossing, and Meadowbrook Commons. And then the third item is discussion, discussion of 40B project matters, right of first refusal status for 31 Hunting Lane, and determination of project eligibility by Mass Housing. And finally, consideration of administration items and routine business for the Finance Director, FY20 Finances and FY21 Budget Development Update, Town Administrator Report, Select Board Member Reports, and then adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions, not to return to open session. Item one, exemption MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the Chair so declares, library. MGL Chapter 30A for item two, section 21A, subsection two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief. And item three in executive session is MGL Chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and he so declares.
Thank you, David. I'd like to make one amendment to the agenda, I'd like to propose one amendment to the agenda to remove item three from the executive session. Paul?
I want to propose an executive session that would be the language of item three, having to do with a possible acquisition of property.
I'm proposing that we remove that based on advice from our Town Council, because it was less than 48 hours before this meeting, and we are not prepared to discuss it, and if it's, and based on an email, I don't think it's something for an executive session.
This was, George?
Yes.
This was for, this was, Barbara wanted to speak about this in executive session. This is the one that was originally posted, Paul is asking for another.
Oh, another one. I don't want to add one, but if this was the, an original one, then we can leave that on, sorry.
Yeah, this is the one Barbara wanted.
Okay. Barbara, can you unmute Barbara for a second?
Hi, Barbara Carbone, KP Law, Town Council. So, I, it's sort of hard to know if we're all on the same page, Mr. Chairman, about which items are coming on and coming off, but I remember there was one that I said was, was, there was not adequate notice, so as long as it's not that item, then it's fine, but it's sort of hard to me to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
Not that item.
It's not that item, okay, David, thank you.
And then, you know, anything that the Board would like to discuss in open session is certainly, you know, I'd certainly never say no to that if that's the Board's desire rather than an executive session.
Paul?
So, out of respect for George, your objection to having executive session on short notice, could we schedule a meeting as soon as possible, a workshop? I'd like to invite land acquisition, advisory, and the Board of Selectmen to discuss this possible acquisition of property.
Yeah, I just, we can't do it this close to the meeting, so let's discuss offline what this is in regards to, and then we'll, we'll schedule it as soon as we can get everybody together. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Rule call vote, Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Durantus?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you, a vote of four to one. Okay, just to start, just for logistics again, with a Zoom meeting, if you'd like to be recognized, I can see the other Board members and Town Council on here, but there's two or three pages of people here. Go into this chat and just kind of raise your hand, and we'll, and I'll try to recognize you as soon as I can see you, but raising your hand on the screen, I may not necessarily see you, so that's the best way to get my attention. Do we have any public comment? Paul?
So, I understand this is Police Appreciation Week, and so I wanted to ask the Board to express appreciation for police officers during this pandemic, and their, their support of the public safety of the community, and also to mention the Fire Department and their role in supporting the public safety of the town. So, as I say, it is Police Appreciation Week, so this, let's appreciate the work that is being done by the Police Department.
No, absolutely, thanks, Paul.
Totally agree, thanks, Paul.
Seeing no other public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Durantus?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so five zero, thank you. The next item is consideration of action items regarding COVID-19, state, local emergency, annual fall town meetings, further discussion for the meeting warrants. Do we have, I know last time we kind of left it off, we'd canceled the June meeting, which means we won't have one before June 30th. Do, does anybody have any?
The only item of note was a note from Town Council saying that we could set the date for August 25th, which was talked about last time, or was set last time, with the understanding that we may have to move it sooner if there's not an extension at the state level to allow it to go into August.
Okay. I don't think we would need to set it yet for August, I mean, what do you think, Paul? You've been involved with a lot of different towns on this.
Well, what, what David is talking about is the Governor's Order, the expiration of the Governor's Order, that's the original order. We can set a fall town meeting at any time to do the issues that we want to put on that warrant. I had originally proposed that we schedule a financial town meeting in June, and if we did that, then the moderator could postpone that to July, and then postpone it to August, depending on the Governor's Order or the ending thereof. Might be easier to do it that way, than to try and schedule a fall, an August town meeting, and then.
The last time, the last time the discussion revolved around the fact that June was going to be way too soon to try to get people together, that's, that's what.
Right, I'm not saying a real, real date, I'm talking about a date that, that the moderator would move over to, the moderator can move town meeting dates by 30 days. So, what we've been doing in other towns is to have the moderator move the dates, there's no limit to the number of 30-day postponements, so we get to August 30th, we could get to August 25th by setting a nominal date in June, and then have the moderator move it over 30 days to July, and then have the moderator move it 30 days to August.
Mary, I think you're on here, do you have a comment on this?
Only that there's a restriction on the date that it had, excuse me, that the Annual Town Report has to be available 30 days before the Annual Town Meeting, so, you know, that's, if you're picking a June date, that is going to enter into it.
Okay. How do you feel, Eric or Chuck, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, in general, with all these, all these dates, I'm actually advocating for pushing them more and more, and, you know, restrict, lessening restrictions such as, what's it called, quorum. It's just, it's more and more clear that, you know, a lot of these dates we have are opening and reopenings, are just going to, can't continue to get pushed, and it's going to be more and more restrictive, so I definitely support pushing it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah. So, so that means, I'm still confused though, Paul, because you're thinking we should set one for June, but then with the knowledge that we're just going to keep delaying it. Does that make sense to you, Mary?
We've already voted to have a meeting in August, the issue isn't, I'm not suggesting we revoke that, I'm just suggesting the procedure, how we get there.
Okay.
So, if we set the meeting up for August, and we have, we have it all set for August, and by good luck, the Governor's Order expires, and everything is perfectly normal in, in a couple of weeks, you may have to reschedule your, our town meeting to be within 30 days or 45 days, I'd have to check the statute of.
It's 30 days.
And that won't happen. That good luck won't happen.
Yeah, probably not.
It is 30 days after the Governor's Order expires.
Mary, do you think we should take any action tonight, or do you think we're kind of good where we're at right now, and wait and see?
Well, the only action that I think, the only reason I think you would want to take any action tonight is if you decided that you wanted to pass, to have a meeting so that a budget could be passed for 2021. The advantage of that is that it simplifies, I think, by quite a bit, the amount of accounting complications that would arise by putting everything off, but if that's not a consideration, and you want to go ahead with the whole meeting, you know, a full, what is there, 24 or something like that, articles on the warrant?
Sharon, can, David, can you unmute Sharon? I wanted to see her thoughts on this with the finance, because I think the financial piece is important to think about before we move on from this.
I'm, I'm, I'm not afraid of the challenge of what it's going to bring.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you want, if you want to push it off until the fall, that's perfectly fine with me. Advisories work really hard, we're at a really good, in a really good place right now as far as the budget goes, there's still more work to do, but from an accounting perspective, I'll work closely with VEDAR and the DOR, and I'm, I'm not worried.
Okay. So, I think, I think I would propose that we really kind of do nothing tonight, we kind of stick with what we've already voted in for August, and go from there.
Is the intent, George, to still go with the full?
I think, I think it makes more sense, I think somebody said it the last time, that we don't want to be getting people together multiple times in that big of a group, so let's have one meeting so we can get it all done at once, so that we're gathering a lot of people in one place less often.
The, the other thing that I would just raise with no requirement for any kind of decision, but just to put it out there so that people might start to think about it, is a number of towns are in the process of thinking about, and I think a couple of towns have actually decided to implement an outdoor meeting, so they would be, you know, that would add a little bit of, it would add some safety, it would also add, you know, a few complicating things, but I don't think anything that we couldn't deal with, but people might want to think about that, and if that's the case, then it might be preferable maybe to hold it on a weekend instead of in the evening, so you don't have to deal with mosquitoes, and, you know, again, no decisions tonight, but I would just put that out there as possibility.
Yeah, I think it makes sense that we try to do it in one day if possible, logistics are going to be a lot more difficult, so let's not complicate it by having two different sessions, let's try and do it one day, I think that's another rationale for the vote last week, for the last meeting.
Excellent, well, I'm going to move on to the next item then, unless there's anything else, anybody has on the COVID-related schedule. Our next item is consideration of appointment of Jonathan Fitch for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2023, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Young, take a rule call vote, or does anybody have any comments, questions?
I'll make a comment that, that he's an excellent lawyer, we're lucky to have him on the Board of Appeals, we have a strong Board of Appeals, I'm glad he's willing to serve.
Thank you, Paul. All right, I'll take a rule call vote, Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Durantus?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so five zero, Jonathan Fitch has been appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The next item on our agenda is a consideration of local initiative program, LIP, via Department of Housing and Community Development, for Coolidge Street Developments, Coolidge Crossing, and Meadowbrook Commons. Barbara, could you kind of speak to what we're working on here? I know you've sent some emails, and.
Sure, I mean, I can speak to sort of the LIP process generally, and sort of recap some of the exchanges I've had with the Town Administrator. I should say, I don't know a lot about the specific proposal that's being considered, so I don't know if I can speak to that, but I'm happy to answer questions related to that, sort of based on the discussion that I can provide now. So, Mr. Chairman, is it that you want a kind of overview of the LIP process, or maybe if I had some?
Yeah, I think it's, I want to have a discussion of that versus a traditional 40B, and, because we did, at our last meeting, we met with the developers from Based on Development who are proposing the, one of the, I can't remember which one's which, but Coolidge Crossing or Meadowbrook Commons, and then also, you know, we've talked to Pulte in the past about the other one, so I want to get an idea if we wanted to go down the road of the LIP, how that, what we need to do, and how that we would go about it.
Sure, so, LIP projects, local initiative program projects are generally considered an alternative to the 40B process, they're intended to give cities and towns more of a role in shaping the project than is typical for a 40B project, that's typically sort of exclusively developer-driven. And under the local initiative program, there are two types of projects involved, there is going through the comprehensive permit process, but with the support of the, in this case, the selectmen, the process is pretty much the same as a regular 40B, that isn't a LIP, but the town provides a letter of support, and usually kind of ongoing support to the, to the developer in the process. The other kind of LIP units are created through a, a sort of the town's typical, or the, under the town's kind of conventional zoning, for example, a special permit project can create affordable units that will go on the town's SHI. It's a local initiative project because the town is involved and supports the project, but it isn't done through 40B, it's done through conventional zoning. So, there are really many variations on both of these themes, it really just, a lot depends on the location proposed, how much support the town wants to provide, what sort of negotiation the town finds it can undertake with the developer, rather than, as opposed to with a 40B development, which typically there's less, sort of the town has less bargaining power. So, there really are all kinds of LIPS, and it just depends on this, the needs of the town, the preferences of the town, and it just gives the town an opportunity to have some more control over a, over a project, more control than it does in a 40B. So, I'll just stop there and see if there's any questions, or I could continue talking.
I have a question, Barbara, if you might can ask. Is there a big difference, it seems like, you know, it sounds like a more collaborative process if you're working with a developer.
Right.
Is there a big difference in the timing of the development process to, you know, to shovel in the ground? In other words, is, is timing a pro or con to?
Um, I would, yeah, the, I would say, the review process by the state agencies tends to be a bit more streamlined if it's a, if it's a LIP project, if it's a comprehensive permit LIP project, those reviews go by quicker. The actual permitting process itself, if it's a 40B project, a 40B LIP project, that timeline is the same because, as it would be under a non-LIP 40B, because you, you still have to take all the same steps as you do in a 40B, there is still the occasion for appeals to be taken either by the developer, although one would hope not if it's a collaborative project, or by anyone aggrieved by the grant of a permit, so under those circumstances, there is not, the timing would not be, would not be a large factor, I don't think, in, in deciding which way to go.
Thanks.
Sure, with, if I could just say one more about, note on that, the, if it's something like a special permit, I was just looking at one in another town, created three, it was just three out of 27 units, so not that many affordable units, but done through a special permit process that was actually fairly streamlined and supported, so that process, a non-40B LIP can go more swiftly. You still have an opportunity for an appeal, but it doesn't come with all the baggage, frankly, that a 40B hearing does.
Right. Thank you, yeah, that's good.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, were there any other?
No, I think they, like I said, the developers came in, made their initial proposal, we've sent letters of intent with, to the town of Natick, the city of Framingham, to talk about intermunicipal agreements for the water and sewer with both entities.
Right.
So, we are making progress on those projects, so I think, I think the next step is, they came with an initial site proposal for Coolidge, but I think they need to get further along in their process, and, and probably present a final plan to us for us to give a letter of support.
So, if I could offer a couple comments on it, the advantage to doing a LIP project is that you have a lot more negotiating power, the town does, than it does under a 40B that's driven solely by the applicant, and the opportunity to get mitigation, or, you know, any, anything else that would be on the town's list of desirable things to happen, this is the time to start negotiating for that, and without really knowing any of the specifics here, I think it'd be worth whoever is kind of working on this to, to give some thought to what, what might be bargained for, and I can send you a sample letter from a LIP that the town of Marion signed on to, where it had, in the letter of support that it wrote to Mass Housing, it had a number of conditions, "Our support is contingent on the following", and then it listed those. So, it's, you know, like so many things, it's a matter of negotiation, and with a LIP project, the town has more room to negotiate than it does through a conventional 40B. And I saw Gino was on here somewhere, and I, I wonder if Gino wanted to offer some comment on that.
Yeah, I was going to just ask for Gino to say something and see where we're at with the project, go ahead, Gino.
I muted you, Gino.
Okay, thank you, I was trying to do it myself. No, I think I agree with what Barbara said, exactly, that's, that's the process, and the developers made their presentation, it's been a tremendous improvement from earlier versions, so I think it's certainly worth considering.
Yeah.
This project also has a couple of intermunicipal agreements for sewer and water, which is another source of negotiating, huge improvement to the project, subsequently, but it also gives the town the ability to negotiate, because those are obviously done with the town, so.
Right, I mean, there, there are a lot of good things that can come out of the negotiating process, and so, you know, the, the time that anyone puts into it, I think would be well worth it. And again, I, I can't comment on the specifics of this proposal, because I don't really know much about it, but I'm happy to look at anything if that would be helpful going forward.
Excellent. Thank you for that, I think that's a good, I think you gave us a good understanding of, you know, that being an option, and hopefully that could help the process along, if we're in support, if we vote to be in support of the Coolidge project, and, and after we see, you know, it further, further along with their planning, then we could go from there.
Sure, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so happy to discuss that.
Go ahead, Gino, Gino, go ahead.
We're just, one other point that I don't think Barbara mentioned, but LIP provides the town with automatic 70% local preference, whereas if, if it's not a LIP, you have to just, you can still get the local preference, you have to justify it.
Right, it's a good point, thank you, that's a good point.
Sounds like maybe we want to add this to our two weeks from now agenda, maybe, George, but one other question I had is, it may be a stupid question, but would, is it conceivable that you could do a LIP only for one of the two, or would you do both? Is it a composite, because they're really two different developers.
They are two totally separate projects, so.
Yeah, so I wonder if, that's another aspect we could consider, whether we want to do a LIP for both or just one, I'm not advocating either one, but.
Well, actually, the Meadowbrook Commons project sort of fits into the second category of, of LIP, the local action units, because it includes seven affordable units that, that's by virtue of town, town needing vote, and ultimately special permit from the planning board.
That's the townhouse development, the other one would be all affordable, the rental units.
Well, they'd all count, it'd be 25% affordable with, but all 120 units.
Right, they'd all count.
Would all count towards our, our.
Correct.
All right, well, I think that gave us a good idea on that, we'll, hopefully, like you said, Jeff, at our next meeting, I'll find out, maybe the developer will help you further along and can present something more to us, and we can go from there.
It'd be useful to see what Barbara says, but to maybe even just talk to one or two towns, and, you know, just so we know what kind of questions to ask at some point, too. A mini bench meeting, maybe Gino, maybe the planning board, and I, John Higley's on here, too, hiding somewhere, I guess, maybe you guys know that kind of thing, but that would be useful to understand, what, you know, almost be useful to talk to some towns who've been through the process, and, you know, things they would change about how they did it, or, you know, do they regret their decision, or sort of a benchmarking, lessons learned.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one other comment?
Yes, please.
Just about LIP generally, a LIP, when the town becomes involved in a LIP project, it really takes responsibility for a lot of the, the monitoring of the affordability on the units, and just some other aspects of the project, that it does not typically, you know, under a regular 40B, but, so it. But, so it, part of the process is just understanding what, what work the town will have to do, or, you know, can always farm out to a consultant, that's often done. But there are responsibilities that come after the project is up and running that the town would just want to take that into consideration. I mean, that's a positive thing, because you retain sort of oversight of the project, which I think is always a good thing, but the process for the town doesn't end just, you know, when the permit is issued.
Right.
Right.
And it seems like that applies here particularly because it'll be an intermunicipal agreement with towns on the water and septic system. So we're gonna, almost by definition, have to be more involved than would be if it was, you know, private well and private septic.
Right.
Correct.
Jay Somerville?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, could somebody comment on where the discussions stand with the city of Framingham, the town of Natick, on the sewer and water provisions?
David Williams, he, he has sent letters to both, like I said, the town and the city. We've, we've had initial conversations with them on this. We haven't gotten any detailed negotiations because we have to see the full plan first, so. David, is that correct, or is there anything else you want to add on that?
Yeah, the, the letters were notices of intent to negotiate an intermunicipal agreement. So Pulte has been delivering that in their meetings with Natick and Framingham. We, sorry, we've not had any response directly from those, from Natick and Framingham regarding that notice. So at some point, I believe that Pulte would be coming back with some sort of letter from each of those towns.
And Jay, Jay, that makes a good point, that we probably should set up a meeting. David, we should set up a meeting with both the city of Framingham and the town of Natick, from at least one or two of us from the select board, to have some initial conversations about it directly.
Yeah, and I would like this to be a little bit more open-ended. I know that we've talked about this before, but I still have not given up on getting both water and sewer with Natick.
Well, Natick made it very clear, Jeff, that they can't give water.
I heard that, but I'd like to keep it on the table.
Okay, okay, I'm just saying, they've told us, so.
I understand.
Paul, go ahead.
Just to flag a complication here, both the sewer and water ultimately come from the MWRA. And because it's both water and sewer, we may have to become some kind of affiliate or member of the MWRA, which is a process all by itself, separate from intermunicipal agreements with Framingham and with Natick.
I think we've had a discussion about this already, Paul. Barbara, I think you have something to add here?
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna say, I hope nobody asks me because I don't know the answer to that question. But, but I would be very happy to look that up, but, sorry, Mr. Attorney Durances, so.
Pulte has represented that as long as it's a private line direct from Framingham to the development, that's not required.
We're not gonna own the lines, it's not gonna be town, our town water or our town sewer. We're just giving them permission to run them through our town, Paul, so we're not actually gonna be, I don't think we would, from the, or the other discussions we had, we're not actually gonna have to become a member of the MWRA because we're not getting any water or sewer from it, as a private developer is.
I, I hope that's the case, but also related to that issue is whether there's an inter-basin transfer. Because I think on the northern part of the town, we're in the different watershed than we are in southern part of the town. The water, wherever it comes from, is gonna end up in Boston Harbor. So there may have to be a regulatory process to get an inter-basin transfer.
I'm glad Attorney Durances is raising these questions. I think they should be, they should be looked into. I wouldn't just take Pulte Homes assertions about what can.
Absolutely not.
So anyway, there's probably folks at the firm who deal with this more than I do, but just let me know if you want us to look at it.
Yeah, if you could look into that, that would be an important piece, thank you. Anybody, anything else on the Coolidge Street developments before we move on to our next item? I don't see any hands raised, so we're gonna move on to the discussion of 40B project matters. Right of first refusal status for 31 Hunting Lane, I've had a request. Well, first, I just wanna maybe let Barbara say a word, and I know John Holamka has sent me a letter and has asked to make a couple of comments here. So Barbara, do you wanna address where we're at on that?
Well, I guess, and the town administrator and I had discussed this briefly, and also just discussed what sort of could be discussed in open session, and what would wait for executive session. So I guess I would just, I'll, I'll start by saying that the, the status of the right of first refusal is that it has not yet been triggered. There was, a while back, sort of an inadequate attempt at the sort of notice that would be required to trigger the town's right of first refusal, but there were defects in it, and another attorney at our firm, Lee Smith, wrote several memos on that subject, and the town's right of first refusal was not adequately triggered. So the issue has not gone away, and we informed Mass Housing in a letter that, from the town's point of view, the issue has not gone away. But at this point, it hasn't been, it has not been triggered. So I think, David, do you want to address this at all?
No, I think all I wanted to do is that it go on the record in public saying that we don't, we don't believe that it's been triggered.
Okay. John, I know you, you mentioned early on in this meeting that you wanted to make some comments, so John Holamka?
So very briefly, hi, it's Dr. John Holamka, I'm president of Mayo Clinic, and I am the manager of Unity Farm Sanctuary, adjacent 61B property to 31 Hunting Lane. And just to emphasize that I certainly am very strongly interested in this issue and would like to stay involved in any way you see fit.
Okay, thank you, John.
Wait, thank you, Dr. Holamka.
George?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
Can I just say that I very much appreciate the statement that was just made, that that provides a wonderful opportunity for the town to have a nonprofit to whom we can assign our right of first refusal. We have the right to assign our right of first refusal. And when and if we have that opportunity, and when and if our council tells us it's okay to exercise that right of first refusal, I think it's wonderful that you are prepared to accept that right of, that assignment and to assist the town and, and the community in connection with this whole development. My, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do I have any other questions, comments? If you do, please wave to me in the, in the chat, or I think, Jeff, you're kind of watching for that, too, if somebody raises your hand.
Yeah, I am.
Okay. So I guess right now, we're waiting, oh, Frank Jenkins, did you have something to say? Could you unmute Frank, David?
Yeah.
All right, my last point, could someone explain the process of the town exercising an option, and then the determination of what's the fair market value is of that property, and how you arrive at that?
Sure, Barbara?
Um, so when, when there is a proposed change in use or a sale that meets sort of the statutory requirements under 61B, section nine, what has to happen is the, the property owner sends notice to the town of its intent to change the use or to sell the property, and that notice is supposed to be accompanied by a bona fide, I'm sorry if I'm just not remembering the exact statutory language, I can look it up in a moment, but there has to be sort of a bona fide purchase and sale agreement that the town has the opportunity of meeting. So there are, there's case law where what was proposed as the sale price was found to be, you know, not realistic, that's not a bona fide offer. Or, you know, you can imagine circumstances where, and this has happened, the offer is actually on more than one piece of property so that it is impossible for, you know, a town exercises right. So there is case law on there, that the, the offer, that the town has the opportunity to meet, that that's a bona fide offer. I, I think the town can conduct an appraisal on the property, but it is not, and I suppose a town could negotiate with the property owner on the purchase price as, as part of this process, but you kind of have to wait and see what the offer is that the owner proposes is, is the subject of the notice of the change. So I'm.
Go ahead, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Um, go ahead.
The original PNS included non-61B.
Right.
So that's why that one wasn't, we said that's not a bona fide purchase and sale agreement. So what happens if it's due to a change of use? Does, how does that, how does the value, like, it comes out of 61B because they're proposing a change of use to the property?
Right. You know what, I'm gonna have to go look back at the statute because there is some case law on this as well, and I don't want to misinform you or the public on that part of the process. I think I, what I'd like to do is just follow up with just a short paragraph to the chairman on this, because I've seen a couple permutations, but usually it comes down to a sale. And in this case, I just want to make sure that I have my, you know, the law correct on that. So I apologize for not having a better answer, but in the long run, I think we're better off. I see Attorney Durances might want to answer that question.
Paul, go ahead.
So one of the bills passed by the legislature dealing with the COVID-19 issues postponed all of the deadlines having to do with the exercise by the town of right of first refusal. So we don't need to press our town council on this right now at this meeting. There's more than enough time for us to consider this thoughtfully, even if, even if it was triggered, which we don't believe it was, but even if it was triggered, there's, the statute says all that is pushed off.
Okay, thank you. Marion Nutra has some comments here, if somebody could unmute her from the.
Where are you, Marion, I'll find you.
Okay, so I see the chat, I see the chat comment. Language, 61B has language regarding change of use with sale and independent appraisal is required. So that's a good start, thank you for that reminder, and I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm.
There's Marion. Go ahead, Marion.
Yeah, a change of use without sale requires an independent appraisal.
Okay.
And there is language in the law about that, that's my comment.
Thank you, Marion. Anything else on the right of first refusal for 31 Hunting Lane? Not seeing anything, we'll move to the next item, which is a determination of project eligibility by Mass Housing. We did receive letters from Mass Housing that they did do, what's it called, the initial, the initial approval of the sites, is that correct, is that correct language, Barbara?
Um, yes, these are the project eligibility letters, which are the tickets for the applicant to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit. And once they have the PE letters, they can file at any time.
Okay, and is it, was there anything that you found, I mean, you've seen a lot more of these than I have. Was there anything odd about them, or are they pretty much kind of a standard PE letter?
Um, I, I see them as standard, you know, they read the things that the town, the town's comments, and they said to the developer, please think about this, but it's the developer's project, so this is what I would have anticipated. And it's very similar to other PE letters that I've seen.
Okay. Does anybody have, I know there's a lot of people on here, if you have questions or comments, again, just raise your hand, or put, shoot me a quick chat, and I can recognize you before we move on to the next issue. Anybody else on the board have any comments on those project eligibility letters that we received? Paul?
I just want to thank and praise everybody who contributed to our excellent letters to Mass Housing. And even though project eligibility was found, essentially, the points made in those letters have been incorporated into the Mass Housing letters as things that need to be addressed by the developer. So we have made progress, we were able to get those issues on the table for the developer.
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just some process, and also for the audience. So this eligibility letter is good for two years, and within those two years, they have to do a comprehensive permit, and that's what we're used to seeing, which is a, more or less a design of a housing unit to go before the ZBA. How, how easy is it, and this is for Barbara, how common do you see extensions to those two years being granted?
Um, I have never seen an applicant unable to get an extension from Mass Housing.
And what's an extension, one year, two years?
Um, well, they have usually applied, they usually start the process not that long after getting the letter. You know, it often depends on the economy, so these things kind of come and go in waves. But I, I have seen developers request an extension and obtain them. I, I don't have, I don't have a particular example to illustrate that, but I just know that is, Mass Housing job is to facilitate the applications to the ZBA. So there, I just haven't seen a developer unable to get an extension. And I, that, remind me of one thing, and it's related to something Attorney Durances said earlier. Right now, during the state of emergency, there was also legislation in early April that suspends the deadlines for a lot of permitting matters, such as opening public hearings. So if the board got the application, the ZBA got the application tomorrow, the board would not have to open public hearing within 30 days, as the statute requires. The board would have, the statute says, up to 45 days after the end of the state of emergency.
I just unmuted Craig Mills, I think, had a comment.
Hi, Craig.
Oh, hi, George, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So I, I just want to make sure everyone understands that at this point, there is no notice of intent to change use that has been filed by Mr. Lebarsky, and there likely won't be one. So I think it's gonna be very important for the board to determine very clearly when the right of first refusal is triggered. And we have been advised by council that that is, at the moment, an application where the ZBA is filed. So I think it's gonna be important for the board to get comfortable with that conclusion. Because then, then the entire appraisal process can, can be started, and, and hopefully, the 61B portions of the property at Hunting Lane can be purchased by, by the Holamkas, of course, on the condition that the, that the price comes in a range that's acceptable to them. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig.
If I could comment on that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think there are sort of a number of steps that could arguably trigger the right of first refusal. And right now, what we've sort of told Mass Housing is, we've said further steps to develop the property. And kind of, that's where we're leaving it for now. And I do agree with Mr. Mills that we need to pay very close attention to the different steps as they're taken, so that we can make a determination of when the town's right of first refusal is triggered.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, Craig, and all your, you know, everybody who's participated in this. As Paul said, it's been, it's very collaborative work through the town. Jeff, go ahead.
No, I didn't have anything.
That was me.
I thought you raised your hand. Oh, Eric, I'm sorry, you're right below Jeff on my screen.
I know, we're like twins. I know we could beat stuff forever and ask him any technical questions. any technical questions, but I think the one because it's in the fall that the actual assessors meet and vote to determine what stays on chapter 61 or not. I don't know, I'm just more thinking processes. And if they voluntarily get off 61, I think they're given about there's a year lapse time after that before they do change of use. I guess we simply have to stay on top of it, see if they're staying on 61 or 61A or B or whatever or not. And then because it for my timing, it seems like there's a narrow time between when their special permit is due and when they can allow their 61B to to lapse. And it's a very narrow window in there. Just a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I I agree. It's, you know, it's something to play. I agree with you and Mr. Mills. It's something to pay close attention to.
Absolutely. Okay, Frank Jenkins, I see your hand up again. Go ahead. David's got to unmute you.
Yeah, I got it.
There you go.
I have a question in terms of sequencing. We have two projects. We have Collet Street, seems to have been progressing along the lines of what we want there. And we're talking about maybe a lip for that. If that is approved before Hunting Lane and North Main are approved, does that mean that they won't get any consideration? Because we will have met our 10% if those project, if the Collet Street project is approved.
Barbara?
Um, I I would have to ask, do you know where you are on in terms of your 10% or your 1.5% or any of the statutory? So the thing is, it is a process to get DHCD to accept units onto your SHI. And it does not happen sort of instantly. So it sometimes it's tied to building permits. There are, I don't think we could say, I don't think we could predict or assume that units will be permitted and accepted by DHCD on the town's SHI before the board hears these applications.
Charlie Sapunaro, I see you have a question.
Uh, yeah, hi, Charlie Sapunaro, 28 Hunting Way. And and as you look at the different triggers for a change of use, I was just wondering, wouldn't the drilling of the two municipal wells be considered a possible trigger?
Um, I I may ask the the town administrator about this, but I think in the chair, but I think at some point, we might be sort of shading into sort of discussion of sort of legal issues and strategies. So I, these are all.
Stuff until we can have an executive.
Yeah, I think these are all important questions, but I I don't feel comfortable discussing all of it in in open session. So.
Thanks. Thanks for the question, though, Charlie. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? If not, we're going to move on. Thank you, everybody. I know there was a lot of people on here to hear this discussion. It's hard to see how many people are on here because it's split into three screens, but I appreciate you all coming on.
Fifty-seven.
So the next item on our agenda is consideration of administrative items and routine business. Finance Director, Sharon.
Okay, in terms of our 2020 finances, we continue tracking well compared to our budgets. I wanted to let you know that the year to date expenses that we've incurred and paid related to COVID-19 that are unbudgeted expenses is at almost $30,000 right now. Seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of that is FEMA reimbursable, and 25% of that is reimbursable under the Federal Stimulus Cares Act. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm going to be working closely with the COVID-19 Work Group on a projection for expenses incurred from March through December 2020. And we will be submitting for reimbursement both through FEMA and through the Federal Stimulus Cares Act. And types of expenses are obviously, you know, PPE and but other things that are also that we can submit for reimbursement would be the changes to the building that Sean has been working on to make it more safe for the employees. Also, a lot of the work that's been done by Sue, the COA, delivering meals and helping out that way, and any additional compensation that people have, additional work that people have done to support the COVID-19 issues, that's also reimbursable. So we're going to have to, next week is going to be a big week, really pulling all this stuff together.
Paul?
Just want to add that I've been working on plans for reopening town halls in other communities. Well, the CDC has issued a series of guidelines, which they posted on their webpage, and OSHA has issued some guidelines on reopening that's posted on their webpage. There's been a very comprehensive study done by the Massachusetts Technology Council on what they think should be done for different kinds of reopenings. The kind that we have is more of an office type of setting, at least for our our town hall. But we're waiting for the governor's reopening group to come up with the recommendations that are going to be mandatory for us as a community. And then we can obviously do more than what the governor is saying. But the anticipation is he's going to follow the CDC guidelines. So I can go through those guidelines for you, but this isn't really the the time or the place of.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of work being done by a lot of very smart people who are going to be telling us what we ought to be doing.
And I'm sure that Darryl and Ellen on the Board of Health are fully aware of all that as well, Zach. So but thank you for that information. And then just in terms of the budget, right now, we have met guidance. However, there are a few departments that are still working with the advisory committee. So we want to make a few more cuts so that we can keep that tax rate low. The departments we're still working with is police, DPW, the library, they're going to meet next Tuesday to talk about the new opening. Right now, their budget is based on a 10-1 opening, which will not be happening. So we'll see some cuts there. And also, there's a few issues with the with the collector's office that we'll be working on. So but we'll keep you posted, you know, at all the meetings and how we're doing with that.
Thanks, Sean.
That's my update.
David, I know you you had mentioned that maybe you wanted, you had a question, you wanted to have an update on the COVID and maybe have John Holamka add something here?
Yeah, I just had two items. One is, Sean, at Public Works is beginning to address the collapsed culvert project on Lake Street, and that replacement culvert has been ordered and has about a two-week delivery day delay. It's been discussed with CONCOM, and we expect it to be complete prior to the scheduled paving of Lake Street. And then the other item is I wanted to give Dr. Holamka a few moments to tell us about his COVID involvement as an update for us.
Well, thanks so much. And so in addition to my Mayo Clinic duties, eight weeks ago, I was assigned to co-lead the nation's private sector response to COVID, with over 1,000 companies banded together on everything from ventilators and PPE to vaccines and cures. As we go through these five stages of COVID, from isolation, zooming from our homes, to a period of aggressive testing, to a pre-vaccine return to work, to a post-vaccine return to work, to a new normal, the coalition that I oversee is guiding much of that. It is all being run from Sherburne, Massachusetts.
Yay.
And so if any of you and this town needs anything, please draw on me, because whether it's the Gates Foundation, whether it's the big tech companies, everything from private sector COVID response and Mayo Clinic is happening from Unity Farm.
Well, thank you.
I was just going to add on to that, though, John. We haven't met. I'm Jeff Waldron. But we do have a strong team in town with Zach Ward and Darryl Bearzly and Ellen Hartnett are leading it from the Board of Health. But we also, so we're meeting twice a week as a group. We're meeting twice a week with Dover, all the representatives from Dover, including the fire department, first responders, councils on aging, partly because you want to compare notes, and partly because we have a shared school system. So we're working with Dr. Keo is on all the calls as well. So we're working with the school system. We're working very closely on the woman doing a lot of our contracting tracing right now, Alyssa Kaiser is her name. She's the our visiting nurse association representative. So she's actively going into the state's Maven database and tracking not only positive tests, but family members of positive tests and presumed positives also. So she's been the one leading the very good effort we've had in contact tracing. So that's kind of what's been going on in town.
Should also mention that I'm very involved with the governor on contact tracing issues. And we'll provide a lot of oversight to the contact tracing activities and will certainly keep you informed.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that. One thing I was going to ask is the Partners in Health people, because I know Gary Gottlieb a little bit. So I don't know, are the Partners in Health people, I think they were going to start in Chelsea initially.
So the the group that is working on this includes Google, Apple, Partners in Health, the MITRE Corporation, and a variety of technical experts.
Yeah.
And we're all working quite aggressively on this.
Good. I'll schedule maybe a call later on. Thank you.
Thank you, John. David, do you have anything else under Town Administrator Reports?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Select Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything? Mr. Yan?
We walk regularly over at the Barbara Reservation with our dog. And in the fields and on the trails, things are fine. But I've been, last two or three times we've gone in a parking lot, which is a fairly restrained area, I've been struck that personally nobody is wearing masks. So I want to put on my hat as town nuage and remind people when they're in close proximity to please mask up, because the trails are fine, you've got good separation, but the the parking lot, I think I'm up to about eight or 10 people that have been not 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 masked, wearing masks. So the work that Jeff and Board of Health and I are doing, it just it feels, it's a little frustrating, because I thought that the message was out very strong about the importance of of wearing a mask to protect others primarily. But so that's all.
Thank you.
I'll stop with my little, I'll get off the van box.
Thanks. Paul?
So I want to remind everybody that we had just signed a new contract with the town administrator. And as part of that contract, we're supposed to, in May, the month of May, establish goals. And that means the town administrator is supposed to be submitting his draft of potential goals, and we're supposed to be adopting the goals. I think the contract says it has to be done by May 30. Of course, David can correct me by missing some of the dates. So I want to be sure that we have this on the agenda and that it's moving forward.
Okay.
We're performing the contract as we just signed and has been agreed to.
Thanks, Paul. Jeff?
Yeah, I was going to add one thing. I'm talking to Mike Kickham. You know, he's been asking me what we could do for Memorial Day. We don't know yet. What Dover has decided to do is not very much. They're basically going to have all the churches in Dover ring their bells at noon on Memorial Day simultaneously. So I got a few ideas, and I'm talking with Darryl and Zach and Mike Kickham and Doug Brody, just to see if we can think of something we can do that obviously wouldn't put anyone at risk, but a touchy way to commemorate the day.
Thanks, Jeff. Chuck?
One other thing I wanted to mention is the fire department is helping to organize a, I think it's kind of a virtual parade to honor Betty Douse's 99th birthday. It's, I think it's moving at the Unitarian Church parking lot at 10:15, and maybe just give me the date on May the 19th. So kudos to the fire department and anyone who wants to celebrate Betty's 99 years in Sherburne should join in.
Thanks, Chuck. All right, not seeing anything else. We're going to adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions not to return to open session. Item one, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares library. Item two, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief. Item three, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Chair does declare on those, so I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Johnson. Having a second, we'll now have a roll call vote. Mr. Durensis?
Hi.
Mr. Yan?
Hi.
Mr. Waldron?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed and will not be returning to open session. We're now in executive session. Thanks, everybody who came. I think David will get everybody out, and then we can start discussion after it's just us.